Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Here.
Councilmember Shockley?
Here.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit outdoors labeled one or two in the back of the room and to the front lawn or back parking lot of Town Hall. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes, executive session minutes of February fifteenth, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Moving on to public hearings and public comment on docketed items. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a public comment on docketed items only? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hi. Yes, you can comment now. Just turn the microphone on and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sally Backland. I live at fifty-five Old North Road in Coventry. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the voting no for the release of the bond for Green Farm Estates. Councilmembers, on January thirteenth, 2024, my yard was flooded. There was a river of water flowing between my house and my neighbor's house. This went on for hours. This was from the overflow of the Mingle Wood Retention Pond, which is behind me. Thousands of gallons of water flooded my yard, my neighbor's yard, and in turn flooded my lower level. I had to take a week out of work to deal with the water. It took thousands of dollars of my hard-earned money to navigate and mitigate the water damage. What was a finished lower level is now gutted. The drywall is cut three feet high. I have plastic between my house and my garage. My understanding is this retention pond has been overflowing and flooding the neighbor's property since it was built. I have emails from neighbors that go back to 2021. There's been talk of mitigation, there's been talk of fixing, and nothing has ever happened. And I know there's been, you know, people coming in and out of the council. I understand that. But something really has to get done here. And yes, this is a hail Mary. Why? It's because the neighbors really thought, and someone told them, that as of last year, the bond was already released. So there's really nothing we could do. We recently found out that the bond has not been released. I know you're probably going to vote on that tonight. There's so many questions that need to be answered that haven't been. I want to do more research. Do I have to worry every time we have a big rainstorm that my yard is going to get flooded? I'm going to have to deal with more water in my basement? I can't mitigate this. I can't even rebuild until I know this has been resolved. How do I sell my house? Who's going to want to buy it? I've lost money in my house. I've only been here since 2022. Now, had I known I was in a flood zone, which I'm really not, but maybe I should be now, I would have never bought the house. I love Coventry. It's quiet, it's peaceful, the neighbors are great. But this is really a stress on all of us. If you release the bond, my understanding is the pond designed and built, and I'm just questioning, was done correctly and you're happy with it, and you're going to like, ah, there you go. But does that mean that the design is such that it was designed to overflow in people's yards? Because that's, to me, is what you're saying. No, that's fine. That's okay to do. So I'm asking you to vote no on releasing the bond this evening, to give us more time to investigate and, you know, just look for the truth and find out what's going on, because this really has to be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members here in council chambers, public comment on docketed items only? Any members of the public on Zoom, raise your hand to be let in. State your name and address for the record and unmute yourself.
Ron Flynn, twenty-one B Covington Road, Chairman Coventry Planning Commission. I apologize for not attending tonight's meeting. My daughter is very sick and I am watching my seven-month-old granddaughter Maya. I wanted to make a quick statement because I feel as though my integrity has been questioned. Sometimes my uncontrollable passion towards these things can be misinterpreted, but my attentions are always pure. I want you to think back about twenty years ago. This is when I took on the responsibility of giving back to my community by being a member of boards and commissions. I say that with pride because I gave back endless hours. Remind me, remind you about a year ago, when the planning department was on the verge of collapse and I had to step up and keep things together. Thankfully, things have shifted towards the better under the great leadership of Doug McLean. I'd like to thank you for your time. I felt that this was important to say.
Thank you. Any other members of the public on Zoom, raise your hand and unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record.
Good job.
Going once, going twice, three times, public comment on docketed items is now closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Make the motion.
Second. Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll draw the motion. Licenses, item A, new Victorlin license, Cup of Joy Cafe, fifteen thirty-two Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. This is on pages eleven and twelve of our packet. Manager Pirlo, do you have comments on this license request?
Yes, Madam President, we do have some concerns regarding this license. Some communication was received today regarding no documented sewer at that location from Mr. Rose from Jeremiah Engineering. There's also an issue regarding the Board of Health and no CO. And also it's pending a fire inspection approval. So at this point, I cannot recommend approving the license.
Cup of Joy. What's the pleasure of the council? Vice President LeBlanc?
We just take the manager's recommendation that we do not approve that license this evening.
Is the applicant here this evening? Just come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Turn on the microphone.
My name is Paul Oliveri.
Can you just make sure the microphone's turned on, please? It should be the flip switch. Yep. Thank you.
Should have been on. It says on.
Yep, just speak right into the microphone, please.
Okay. My name's Paul Oliveri. I came before the council last year. It was granted my license. I understand the new manager and I see what's been happening here. I don't understand why I have to go through all these procedures, the sewage, the CO. All permits were pulled down there, and I think this matter should be taken up, okay? And explained because I talked to Chuck today. He doesn't know nothing about it. I felt bad for the guy. Dan, you just came into the picture, all right? You don't know nothing about it. I met Kevin today. He did went through my building and everything in that place is the code. Everything in that place is brand new. The reason why it's taken so long and I didn't pick up the license was because I couldn't get coffee machines. I could, had painting. I had stuff to finish in that building where there were no permits to be pulled. And as far as the sewage goes, I wish I could help everybody with that. I had nothing to do with that. I lost millions because of that sewage line on my property, which I never wish I gave the right to from the old council that was here. And if you really want to know about it, you can talk to Kerry McGee because he's the only one who stuck up and went to bat for me with the battle down there. A six-week project turned out to be three years. I walked away from a lawsuit. This is all record. I'm not going to start over. I've been carrying that place for twenty years. I deserve to try and get open. I, I, everybody drives by all the time. The last council, we were going to sit down and have a coffee. Okay, Dan, I'm not to disrespect you at all, but I think everybody's out of line here and we got to get together on the same page. There's nothing been done down there behind anybody's back.
I'm not saying there has. I'm just saying there's none of the required information is here. So if we need to have a meeting, we can definitely do that with Mr. Rose and everyone else.
Every, everything is so upside down down there with inspections. It's beyond me. I wish, like you, you bring up the sewage. I had nothing to do with that. They took care of all that. That was all supposed to be cleared. I don't pay no sewage.
So I agree with what you just said, which is we need to get everything sorted out.
That's all I'm asking.
Yes, I agree with you. So in, in the, given the fact that you said that things need to get sorted out, there shouldn't be a vote on this license tonight until things are sorted.
I understand that. I just don't want to wait another month or better to open this place up.
We can set up a meeting as long as we can get all the players together. We can set up a meeting next week. That's fine with me. Whoever we need to be there. Mr. Rose needs to be there. Chuck needs to be there. The Fire Marshal needs to be there.
Right.
We'll get all the players in plaque, in pack, and we'll have a meeting.
The last, the last time when I came, and by the way, I was told today, and I'm not too happy about it, and that's why I'm here. I didn't bring my attorney. I didn't do nothing because I was told I never went in front of this council last year. Well, I did go in front of the council last year, and yes, it was voted on individually. But yet, and I'm not going to mention his name, but he works for the city and saying that this was never brought forward last year, and it was. And I just want to get this cleared up, and I want to do it fast because I've got, I hired high-quality people to make this place happen, and I think the town needs it. I've opened this greenway up, which, by the way, that's another situation. That's an easement to drive a car in and drive a car out. That was supposed to be just for the pump station, not for people to come walking through, going to the bike path and all this other stuff. And I want to know, when I do open, who's going to be covering the insurance? God forbid, because they whip in there.
Sir, we're getting away from, we're getting away from the agenda item of the license, so.
Well, that's part of it.
At this point, I'm going to ask the council if there's a motion to continue the license.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion from members of the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you. Sounds like Manager Pirlo will be in touch.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You have a great day.
Moving on to item B, new mobile food establishment license, M&amp;J Enterprises LLC, doing business as The Woods Tavern, yearly license. This is on pages thirteen to fourteen in your packet. Manager Pirlo, any comments on this license?
No concerns.
Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. I believe the applicant is here this evening. Just, I don't know if you want to come up and just introduce yourself. Just state your name and address for the record. Make sure the mic is flipped on.
My name's Justin Zar, three-six-seven Black Rock Road, and I own three oh three South Main Street as well. So Brent Valerian, the owner of Woods Tavern, and I are starting a mobile barbecue business. Most of the business will take place on South Main Street. It'll probably be once or twice a week is what we're thinking. So that's what we got.
Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, new mobile food establishment license, Laura Sebastian, doing business as Atomic Blonde Ice Cream, yearly license. Manager Pirlo, any comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Is the applicant here on or on Zoom? Good evening. Just unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Deborah, you just got to unmute yourself.
Oh, hi, Deborah Tullow. Hi, fifty-nine Woodmont Street, Providence, Rhode Island, oh-two-nine-oh-seven.
Great. I think we've seen your application come through in the town before. This is just your yearly license renewal?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Um, I take it you work with Laura? We have, we have, we see you. Okay.
She's here too. I'm right here.
Oh, okay. Good evening, ladies. Um, any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Members of the council, at this time, I will seek a motion to take the agenda out of order.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
We'll now go to introduction of new matters before the council. Item A, Kent County Water Authority presentation. Floor is yours. Just introduce yourselves, state your name for the record.
Sure.
Yes.
How are you guys doing? Thank you for having me today. I, we have a new board member appointment, I think is going to be happening tonight. And I was asked to come give a presentation on kind of the state of the affairs authority. So I put together a presentation for you guys just to go through kind of what's going on now, what's gone on in the past and, and answer any questions you may have. First slide. You guys, every year we give to all the cities and towns, we service eight cities and towns in, in and out of the Kent County Water Authority district, actually encompasses eight cities and towns. And in October of each year, I give you a report to the customers, and that report is all-encompassing and it kind of gives sort of the state of this authority year to year. And we're required to do that for all the cities and towns. And what I did was with this presentation is try to sort of give the Cliff Notes version of that and just do a brief overview of kind of where we're at. And because it'd be fun to kind of share with you what's going on because a lot of, uh, what's going on in the authority is exciting to me and maybe not so as exciting to a lot of people, but some of the history, I just wanted to go through in nineteen forty-six, seventy-seven years ago is when the authority was, was formed. And so I thought it might be interesting for you guys to kind of see where we all came from. And next slide, please. So we actually functioned under the Patuxent Valley Water Company, the Warwick and Coventry Water Company, East Greenwich Water Supply Company, along with Good Earth Incorporated, which is a real estate holding company and owner of a car pond in West Greenwich. These three water companies merged, and that's how Kent County was formed back in the late forties and early fifties. Next slide. So funding for these initial acquisitions is generated by the authority's nineteen fifty water revenue bond of two million fifty thousand, which has all been retired. The state legislature established that Kent County is an independent authority, supported financially by the user charges and regulated by the State Public Utilities Commission, which it still is today. In nineteen fifty-six, next slide, the empowered, section thirty-nine dash sixteen of Rhode Island General Law empowered the Kent County Water Authority to own, operate, and maintain the water supply system, including all water supply sources, pump stations, transmission facilities, and distribution pumping within the Kent County Water Authority to make rules and regulations to serve the community that comprise Kent County, which is Coventry, East Greenwich, West Greenwich, Warwick, and West Warwick. We also supply water to the outlining reasons of Cranston, North Kingston, and Citrat that were part of the original water system acquisitions or areas that were in need of public water at the time. Excellent. Here are our current board members. As you can see, we have a vacant secretary position. Well, it'll be just a, a board member because the board has not appointed a new secretary as of now. So that's why we're here tonight. So we're really excited to have a new member from Coventry. Unfortunately, with the passing of Russ, he's greatly missed. He was a great guy. I mean, he's sorely missed. But we're looking forward to what comes next.
Mr. Simmons, can I just stop you here? So we had some questions last week, our last time we discussed the appointment of more detail about the board's operation. Can you just give a flyover for the council so they understand what this person is, what our appointments are doing at a typical board meeting?
Well, it's a seven-member board and it's a four, takes four members, you know, to pass a vote. And so I typically, what happens is we have an agenda just like you guys, and we bring matters before the board. If they require a vote, they vote, vote on those matters. So.
Do you have examples of those matters for the council?
Well, the, the presentation kind of goes through some of the things that we're actively going through now. So you get a pretty good flavor of what we're dealing with in real time.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Just going along with her question. So how often does the board meet? Is there a stipend associated with the board?
Okay.
Are there site visits that, are board members are required to go for whatever reason, if it's the pump house, if it's more, you know?
Sure.
Those are some of the questions that we're asking.
Okay. Yeah, that's, so we, they, the third Thursday of every month, and there's a three, by law, is three thousand a year. And leave whatever that breaks out to monthly as the stipend. It can't exceed that value unless it's changed by the legislature. Site visits all the time. If anybody that wants to come and do a visit will more than happy to do. It's not just the board members. It's any member of, you know, the council or anybody that's interested in taking a tour, we're more than happy to do that. We do that pretty regularly, actually. So usually when we onboard a new member, I give a giant board packet, and it kind of goes through all the rules and regulations and everything that the board member is responsible for, including, because we're regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers, we're also overseen by the Rhode Island Department of Health because it's drinking water. We all have to have licensed operators to operate the authority. Who else is there? Water Resources Board, and obviously the legislature. We answer to all of them. So it's all encompassing.
Thank you.
Councilman Pasqua?
The board that you have now, is it, do you have members on the board that are either municipal employees in the towns you service or commission members, committee members of those districts? Are they just citizens in capacity?
Just citizens, business owners, professionals.
Any other questions on that? All right, thank you. Sorry, please continue.
Sure. This is a copy of our org chart, most recently distributed in January of twenty twenty-four. And that's how the organizational structure is, is laid out. It's thirty-seven employees. We're not allowed any additional employees unless we go in front of the Public Utilities Commission or request new and increase in employees for the organization. So that's where we're at now. We're lean mean machine. We run very efficiently and we're, we're pretty proud of that. So that's where we're at now. We are building the new facility, which I'll show you some photos of that, which will allow growth up to about little over fifty employees. So that'll carry us well into the next fifty, seventy-five years. So we're, we're pretty proud of that as well. So we're ready for prime for growth. We're excited for it. Next slide. So we, we, we have to get, we're required under law to get audited every year through Hagan Sahady. Those are audit. And we're Kent County Authority was given a clean audit opinion as the financial statements were presented fairly and free of material statement in accordance to the requirements of the RIPUC, Public Utilities Commission, as well as GASP. They found no deficiencies in internal controls or material weaknesses regarding our financial reporting. A big part of our rate and what's lost on a lot of people are nonprofit public benefit corporation. Half of our rate goes back to putting pipe in the ground and, and putting buildings and pump stations in place. That's nine point six million dollars a year. We do that, and that's part of our rate, so we don't have to go out and bond. And it costs more money. So if we can pay as you go, it's, it's less expensive for the ratepayers, and that's how we're able to run. A lot of the things that we also do is we do a lot of the work in-house, and we can save a lot of money doing that as well. So that's the next, that KCW reinvests six, nine point six million dollars annually onto the RIPUC-approved critical infrastructure replacement plans, the IFRS and our CIPs, they're all reinvested into the authority.
Councilwoman Shockley?
Yeah, so I think that that's great that you build into the rate the ability to maintain your structure. How do you work with towns? Just as an example, a couple of years ago, the town council was made aware kind of a last minute that you guys were moving forward with a project, and it would be a great time for us if we could to kind of piggyback on your project. So are that, those the sorts of things? Like, when do you typically let towns know what you're planning on doing? How would? Does your board help with that? Like, just to make sure that if there were opportunities for towns to also work on their road infrastructure, that we could?
Yeah, we regularly communicate with the cities and towns as best we can, as well as other utilities. That's another big one, is, is working with the Rhode Island Energy in particular. So, and as part of that annual report, you can see ongoing and active projects that are on the docket. A listing of all of the streets goes out to the cities and towns of where we're going to be working. There's also, we have almost twenty million dollars in design projects that are just sitting on the books that have been designed that we're just waiting to move forward with. Actually, in Coventry, there's a lot of work, and we've been working with Kevin. And Rick Burns here, my Director of Operations, has been working directly with the Director of Public Works, is to kind of do that exact coordinated effort now, because I know you guys have money available to repave, and obviously if we can get the pipe.
We're repaving, and we also have, we're doing sewer area planning on. I'm sure you saw on the agenda as well. So, you know, we'd we'd love to make sure all of those marry up.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 an amazing partnership if we can get it to line up because it saves money all around.
Yeah.
Especially because half the cost is paving, like literally half the cost is paving. So if you can partner either with another utility or with another city in town, it's always favorable to go that way.
Was that all your question? One thing I know that this council was not too pleased with was getting getting the invoice from you guys for, I think it was $2 million plus dollars for our share of maintenance in July after we had already passed our budget. Is is that normally when we get those those invoices or notices from you? Or is there any way that we can get it when we're considering our budget instead or ahead of?
Share of maintenance of what?
You help me on this? Oh, it was Westworth treatment, my bad. You should have stopped sooner.
Wrong department.
Oh.
I'm out of.
Why didn't anybody stop me?
We're still mad.
Oh.
We are mad.
We we're still mad. I thought it, I thought it was them.
A lot of credit from you guys.
Okay.
Well played. All right. So.
Where's yours?
Okay. So, you know, we're building this new facility. This has actually been on the books for almost four decades to build this facility. And it's it's been extremely difficult, number one, to, you know, garner the money. Because really, almost all of the money that's gone back into the authorities has been replacing all the pipe in the ground and that is very expensive. And so we just kind of limped along in the facility we had for 50 years. And if anybody's visited there, you realize we need a new facility. We're triple parked, you we can't move. And it was time to move on. So before the Fed started increasing interest rates in February of 2022, we were able to get through the state revolving fund $20 million to build our new facility. We're very excited for that after, God, yeah, four decades of working through that. And so we did a feasibility study, went through all the motions. We researched 13 properties. We did a needs and needs assessment and then I mean, just piles and piles of paperwork and a lot of work went into that. And it's finally come to fruition. So we'll be doing an opening ribbon cutting in that hopefully in June. That is the substantial completion date of that facility. And again, I'll show you guys pictures of where we're at right now, but we're we're in the towards the finish line on that. So here's the 30,000-foot view of the system. Like I was saying, we service eight cities and towns, Coventry being the most customers, just just ahead of West Warwick at the moment. Like they kind of go back and forth between the two towns. But that's why there's two members on Coventry. There's two members in West Warwick, one in East Greenwich, two in Warwick. That's it. And that fills out the complement based on the number of water takers. So in total, we have, it's right around 27,500 service connections and the 27,265 are actually active at this time. So this next slide just shows not only the number of customers, but the water used by those customers. And we recently completed a wholesale agreement with Quonset Development Corporation. So we wholesale water to them. We're also in conversations with the town in North Kingston to start wholesaling water to the town in North Kingston. That was for water quality concerns more than anything else because of the PFOS situation going on. Sure you guys have seen it on the news, but emerging contaminants and a lot of the wells in Rhode Island and all over New England, all over the country for that matter, are experiencing levels of PFOS. And the federal regulations are potentially going down to four parts per trillion. Now, one part per trillion is a is a drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, just to give you a perspective. Very, very low concentrations that you have to come into compliance with. North Kingston's faced with that. We're faced with it. We're going to be building a new plant. We're in the design phase, building a brand new treatment plant to accommodate that, which I'll show, I have a little bit on a slide further, further in on that. But that's kind of where we're at. It's it's a difficult problem, the water quality in particular on our East Greenwich well. So that's that's up and coming. It's a major project and we'll be probably seeking SRF funding to see that through. So the authority you can see is massive. It's about 50 square miles. Just in comparison, Providence Water Supply Board, they have 200, 250 employees, 6,600 hydrants, 1,100 miles a main. We're almost, we're about half of them, but we're operating instead of 250 employees. We're doing it with 37. So that's just to to show that we're trying to do the best we can the most efficient way. And almost all of the cash goes back into building the system to be more robust and resilient and get the old pipe out of the ground. That's been our mission for many decades now, so. Some of the goals completed. I was telling you the new central operating, central operating facility. So we broke around a little over a year ago. That's just about finished. We rehabbed up here on Notty Oak. We had an old pump station there. It was just standing at demo. We decided to convert it to a pressure reducing valve station. So probably unlike, if you're going to compare us to like Providence Water, Providence is mostly a gravity fed system. So it they put it up to an upper level and it just flows downhill. There's no pumping. All of Kent County, almost 99% of Kent County is all pumped. So that's a tremendous electrical expense and it's a tremendous logistical exercise and just keeping it all running. It's very, very difficult. The this PRV station is one example of where you have upper perched water. We call it our 500-foot gradient. If you go back to the previous slide, I can show you these, those yellow colored, that's our 500-foot. You can almost think on the left-hand side of the the map is almost like, I'll call it the mountainous regions of of Rhode Island, right? And then it the center kind of green part is the plains. And then it down towards the light green is is like the coastal. So it's from 500 feet all the way down to zero feet above sea level. So our tanks are perched. Our our highest overflow elevation tanks are at 500 feet. And what this station is, next slide, is is taking that upper perched water at 500 feet and reducing the pressure down to 334 feet and backfeeding that plains area. That's building resiliency and redundancy into our system. That came into effect into fruition as being a very good thing. We did it both there and at our Clinton Avenue pump station. This Providence Water Supply Board actually had a major issue happen inside their plant about four weeks ago. They have a main feed line that was feeding inside the plant that also fed their chemical feed and they had to shut their plant down. When they shut their plant down, we're their first customer. Okay, we're a wholesaler from Providence Water. A large portion of our water comes from Providence Water. So like, well, they said to us, they're like, can you shut down? Basically, shut all your pumps. We're like, okay, but you know, the clock starts ticking because now we're just, we're floating off of these tanks. These, if these PRV stations weren't built and we built these ourselves and with internal staff, we wouldn't have made it. We would have been in a system-wide boil water order and it would have been a nightmare. That was just four weeks ago. So it's just an example of trying to think outside the box and use with what these, the best resources of what we got in-house. Some other issues that we've resolved in around Johnson's Boulevard. We've converted the Johnson's Boulevard pump station that we no longer use and we converted that to a PRV station as well. While we're in the area, we also use Water Resource Board money. On the bills, there's a, there's a charge, a Water Resource Board charge that's charged in everybody's bills. And you can use that to build resiliency into your system. So we use that portion of that funds to actually loop all the mains and on around Johnson's Boulevard. All that area in red, I'm sorry, the previous slide. That area in red, those all resurfaced to a higher pressure. So all those customers now receive higher pressure. And we also looped all the mains so that the water quality would be better. You don't have dead end mains anymore. If dead end mains, water stagnates. The other thing that we started in fiscal 2023 was the IFR 2022, which is Coeset Avenue. I know that's been a hot item because the roads just been a nightmare. With the temporary pavement, we've heard a lot of complaints, mostly in the city of West, town of West Warwick. But I'm sure you guys, being right over here, probably everyone's driven Coeset Road. They know it's just been kind of horrendous. Just so you guys know, as a council, is that's all getting ripped out and replaced starting April 1st. It was temporary, but between the rains and everything that happened right before the holidays, it just destroyed the trenches. All the trenches started settling and the contractor having that kept coming back and having to repatch it over and over again. And that just made for a bumpy situation. So we're aware of it. We're not happy about it, but where we're at, we're fixing it. And we'll have a brand, when we're all done, it'll be a brand new Coeset Road and all the pipes will be replaced as well. Yes, the project on Centerville was a last-minute addition because we had two major breaks that happened right, right near 95. And there was old transite pipe down there on some of the T connections. And so because of those main breaks, we were able to plead to the Department of Transportation to jump on because they're going to be replacing that road. And Rhode Island Energy had already had come down. They were like, listen, if we want to get, we've been telling them for five years, we want to get in that road to fix the mains before they pave. And when we first approached them, they said, well, we're not going to be repaving. We're just going to scarify it and just do a surface coat. We're like, well, that's not going to work for us. So it just never happened. And then so fast forward to, you know, about a year ago, all the main breaks happened. There was a lot, it was on the news and everything else. And so they acquiesced and they were like, well, if you guys want to get in, get in now. So we had a two-month window where we said, okay, if we can replace this old infrastructure and we can pull it off in two months, we're going for it. And that's why we're there. Another project that's opening up, it's going to be only done at night, is on Route 2 and Tollgate Road. Yes, so at the top of the hill, it's a Staples Plaza. They're on Warwick Water. They have pump station, their pump station, one underwater failed. They couldn't operate. So they're they're being, we have, our our system has enough adequate pressure and volume to feed them. But because they were on Warwick, they had to switch over. So we were backfeeding them from a school through a fire hose connection to keep the businesses running. The owner and the city of Warwick said, we want to become a Kent County Water Authority customer. So that the only way to make them a customer is bring the water main actually legitimately up Route 2 and then feed them that way. The other businesses in the area are also interested in the Home Depots and everyone, they're all in that same situation in a low pressure. And it's actually less expensive for the the business owner there because all the pump maintenance costs and electrical costs of operating and maintaining that station is actually very expensive. And now they don't have to worry about it anymore. So that's part of that project that's opening up also April 1st, but that has to be done at night. Not to affect the traffic. I think there's, am I missing, am I missing one? Which one? Yeah.
We're going to be doing that with our home forces on Obol Lane. There we, that would be the Obol Lane. Going to be doing that within next week when it starts, when the batch plan is open up. We're going to get in there and try and work with Kevin as much as we can. Because he wants to do quite a few roads. I'm Rick Burns, Kent County Water Authority. Director of Operations. But so that's, I guess the gas company is doing their infrastructure also before he gets out there and does the paving. Because I guess you have bonds money or something that you're getting from the government. I wish they'd give us. Obol Lane, Williams, Rathbun Street. Anthony, Lonnie Anthony. Yes, yep.
This kind of dovetails into that your earlier question. Is we're trying, we're doing the best we can. I mean, because we service a city and towns, everyone wants the same thing. So we try to spread it out as best we can.
The Centerville Project's made me a morning person. I'm in the office 30 minutes earlier these days. My ride to work.
Yeah, we'll be out of there by May 1st. We're required to be out of there by May 1st. That's the Department of Transportation's. Oh, oh, great.
I beat Jamie's Roosters in the morning.
Well, Richard's informing the gas company is right in our heels. So I guess the pain's going to last a little longer. So. So I had brought up the the PFOS. Right now, the state regulations on PFOS are at 20 parts per trillion. That's state law and that's what we're in conformance to. All of our wells in our system are below that value. But if the federal government EPA moved to the four, that's where we're going to run into issues. And so our design plans are around the four for that. Next. Also in Coventry, under the Water Resource Board, water quality protection surcharge money, we also acquired two lands that are contiguous to lands that we already own around Mishnak Road and all around our Mishnak Treatment Facility. And those areas highlighted in yellow there are the lands that we acquired as part of that that funding stream. Next slide. We have a lot of goals. I don't want to go through them all. I, in fairness to time, what I'll do is I'll just keep going on with the presentation instead of reading through all these. Okay, yeah, great. If you guys have any questions, you can contact me anytime. Shoot me an email, give me a call. You have my contact information, also a copy of the presentations in both PDF and on PowerPoint. So you guys will have a copy of that so you can print it out at your leisure. Slide. It's a picture of all of our, some of our pump stations and facilities. You can see the complexity and pipe work that goes into running a water system, just these photos alone. Next slide. This is the matrix. This is our our entire water system and how it works. All the ins and outs to every city and town that we service is very, very complicated. The most, one of the most complicated systems in New England. So this slide is kind of on one sheet of music, kind of shows what's coming in and what's going out and how it's pressurized and at what volumes. Down there in the bottom right, that's our average daily demands, 8 million gallons a day. Our max days, 17.5. And our peak hours, 26 for planning purposes. Our sources of supply. Like I was saying earlier, Providence Water Supply Board, 25 million gallons per day. Through our Quakerland Pump Station off of Bald Hill is 10 million gallons per day. Our Oklon Meter, which services just just that north sort of peninsula into Oklon. We've actually recently installed to build resiliency. That was a single point of failure. So if anything failed there, that all of Oklon would have been shut down. So recently, as part of 20, IFR 2021, we put a pressure reducing valve in Pontiac Avenue near the wastewater plant. And we can backfeed that peninsula from the other direction now. So it's no longer a single point of failure. You have two points to build resiliency into the system. That was also, our hand was forced there because the Department of Transportation's replacing the the bridge there. It's a Providence Street. And we didn't want, if they broke the main, the whole place would have been shut down. So this is going to prevent that from happening. Wholesale water, we wholesale to Warwick through a wholesale interconnection at Potawatam. And we're also. And we're also wholesaling to Quantzit and then soon potentially North Kingstown. I still have to have conversations with the council. North Kingstown about how that's going to logistically work, but the PFAS situation is, is all encompassing. It's, it's a very difficult problem. We're trying to solve it together as joint communities and as a regional authority. And I think it's the best lowest, lowest cost solution for both Kent County and North Kingstown. That's mutually beneficial. Emergency, all of our emergency interconnections are here. So if we ever had to backfeed or they had to backfeed us, they're, these are all present. Future demands. Will be up to almost 43 million gallons per day in the 20 year planning period on theoretical water supply and then anticipated future demands. You know, this is part of the Water Resource Board study that was done a couple of years ago. The, it's changed. The, the environment's changed. The, the situation with the PFAS has changed. The situation with Quantzit has changed. So I'm anticipating this is probably going to be closer to 25 million gallons with these new situations going on to the south. So this is, I say stay tuned because this is probably going to change by next year. Currently, we do our own supplies. We have our Mishnauck Treatment Plant, which can do about 2.4 million gallons per day. We have Reese Greenwich Well can do about 2, 2 million gallons per day. Reese Greenwich Well and the design that we're working on to also include North Kingstown and Quantzit. Right now, we're looking at a design of about 5 million gallons per day from that facility alone. That's going to be about $25 million build out. That project's a very complicated treatment plant. That's also removing iron and magnesium, but also polishing that water to remove any residual PFAS that might be present. Slide. This is just the enabling legislation that allows us to sell water to the south. We had to actually change legislation to allow us to even sell water to the south. Next slide. We have 463 miles of main. We replaced about half of it. So that's where we're at now. We're, we're continuing. Next slide. Coventry, everything that's highlighted there, that's of different colors, it's basically everything we've touched and covered and replaced. Significant, large portion of it. Next slide. These are all our active and completed projects in the last five years. As you can see from my earlier conversation, got a lot going on. Next slide. Here's our PRV stations that I was talking about earlier. Next slide. Next slide. Quality and programming. This is all the, our in-house programming that we're doing with our internal staff. It's pretty self-explanatory with the details. Same thing with the next, next page. Yeah, this is, that, that, this previous page, this is, this is our internal document. I just put it in here for your reference. Asset management. Every one of our, you can eat off the floors of any one of our stations. And all the photographs, everything from doing all of our maintenance is all within.
Is that an invitation for lunch?
Sure. Yeah. So there's, there's some photos of some of the insides of our stations, but this, this software allows us to do our asset management and our active maintenance programs. And you can actually drill down into different levels of detail. And it's a pretty amazing piece of software and we use it regularly. We also use it for inspections for private, we did 2,600 inspections for private developments and single family homes. Again, all this is done internally with our own staff. Again, the EPA, there's, I'm sure you've seen on the news, there's a lot of lead service lines. I'm sure you've received phone calls, received surveys. Any, anywhere there's lead service lines in Rhode Island and anywhere in the United States, they're all going to have to get removed and replaced. And the question is who's paying for it? Well, the EPA and the federal government says the water utilities have to pay for it. So how are we going to do that? So that's an ongoing discussion, but that's something we're required to do. We have to provide a map by October of 2024. Fortunately, with the meter changeout program, we were able, we were in 25,000 homes at that time. So when we were in the homes, we actually performed, we had the, the installers perform surveys of the service line material coming into the homes at that time. So we have the data to support where these things exist. And once we have that active map completed, we submit it to the EPA and then we'll come up with a plan to then replace those.
Um, I'm not sure how much more you have. I did want to leave time for council member questions if they had any, because we did get the, a report in our packet. Other members of the council had specific questions that they haven't had answered yet. Okay. I'm not sure if you have many slides left or, oh.
Am I killing it?
Yeah. We just have a packed night, so I don't know if there's any slides in particular you want to fast forward to.
Why don't you just go, well, this, this one slide is what's important as for, for the meter readings. It's concerned about the meterings, of course, it's in the active billing is all done through, we're installing a fixed network. So all of the meter reads will come into real time. Right now we roll the truck. What we used to do in three months, now we do in three days or two days. And then soon, once we fully deploy this, it'll be in real time. So we don't have to do truck rolls and we reallocated those resources to do field customer service. If you want to just fast forward to the facility, I can show you kind of a shot of that. Keep going. That's, that's the, the rendering of the new facility and the entrance. So it's just about done. On the top, you can see there's solar panels. It'll be fully running off of that solar. And in fact, it'll be, we'll have in excess and we'll be selling back. And then on top of that, we're entering a purchase power agreement to purchase all of our energy from renewable sources. So we'll be 100% renewable by, I think, next year. And that, that's pretty much it.
Jeez, could you be more thorough? Just last call, any questions on discussion from the council? Thank you very much for coming. This was something I know that the council has had on its radar to hear from for a while. So we appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah. Call me anytime. If any questions.
One question, one comment. You said that by October 2024, you have to have that lead information submitted. Is that going to be made public?
Yeah, it has to be a public document. We, all water systems in the United States have to have a map displayed on their website showing where they all. Correct.
And then one comment. I just wanted to say thanks. You had come, I think, maybe two years ago in front of us with the new meters that you kind of brought up. I know there was a big stir about them because of the, the additional billings and all that kind of stuff. So just wanted to say thank you for coming in front of us then and, and tonight.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Pascal?
One quick question. The .007 cents per gallon that you had mentioned earlier, does that, any of that go towards the hydrant maintenance or rentals or the fire districts pay for?
Half of the cost, that, that, like I said in the very beginning, half of that value is what's used to put the infrastructure back into the ground.
So the districts, they pay the bill for the hydrants. And then you have the, the, the gallonage price. So is it essentially double charged to the same people is what I'm trying to?
No. So it's all, all the revenues are funneled into one pot, if you can think of it that way. And so hydrant charges and hydrant fees are all separated. And that's all part of a rate design and a cost of service study. And so the hydrants, fire lines, that's all tied into a cost of service study. And then they allocate the rate based on that study. And then that has to go before the, the Public Utilities Commission and Division of Public Utilities down can come in as an intervenor. Anyone can come, any of the fire districts come in as intervenors to challenge those in a public forum. And that's, that's how it gets fleshed out. And then the commission votes on the rate. And that seven cents, we actually, it was a rate decrease like a couple of years ago. There actually was a rate decrease. We haven't had a rate increase in at least like five, six, I think it's seven years. So I'm pretty sure no other utility's done that. So especially in today's climate. So.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman McCallie?
I'm new to this council, so I haven't been around as long as these guys have. But it sounds like that there are things that you guys have been doing, we may not have been privy to. So would this new appointment be a conduit between the two groups? So we know what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further comments, discussion? All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to election and our appointment of town officials. Town council appointments, Kent County Water Authority. Last meeting we heard from Mr. McGee and Mr. Flynn. We did receive a new application after posting publicly like we had requested of the clerk's office. Mr. Ken Mason is Ken here this evening? Hi. Just state your name and address for the record. Members of the council, you should have received Mr. Mason's application from the town manager, I believe it was yesterday. Yes, welcome. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Ken Mason, 13 Sharon Drive. And I want to thank you for considering me for the appointment to the Kent County Water Authority Board. As you can see, you have my resume. I'm a Rhode Island licensed professional engineer, which includes in excess of 16 years working for public utilities of both water and sewer. As Deputy Director for Newport Water, I was involved in the day-to-day operations of the treatment plant and distribution system. I was also involved with rate filings as required for PUC approval as Kent County Water is obligated to do. And I was also involved with the, the initial design build project for the new water treatment plants, which were completed back in 2016. In short, I'm semi-retired. I have the time. I have the energy. I have, I believe, the experience and I also have the motivation to become the next board member and to represent Coventry for, for Kent County Water Authority.
Oh, wait a minute. Assistant Town Manager Broadbent, didn't you work for Newport's Public Utilities at one point? Do you have, do you have any knowledge of that operation?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, Maria Broadbent, Assistant Town Manager. Actually, I led one of the divisions of Newport Utilities Department for about 11 years. During the time I was there, we went through, I was part of a team that worked with consultants and we looked at the optimization of both water and sewer. And, and what I can tell you is Newport has a really complex system. So it's a, it's a, on the water side, it's a series of ponds and they're not all even on the island. And they all needed to, the water needs to be blended and mixed differently because of the source of the supply of the water. They built one of the most sophisticated water treatment plants in the, in the country. While I was there, there were several Public Utilities Commission filings because they provide water to more than just Newport, but also Portsmouth and Middletown and then in the US Navy Base. And, and those, those PUC filings definitely led to a lot of gray hair on a lot of people's part. They get down into the nitty gritty nuts and bolts about everything to do with the water department's budget, how they spend their money, all of those things. So my office was in the, in the water department. Although I managed part of the, I managed all the solid waste, was the city's ombudsman and started stormwater and, and ran a division of water pollution control. But I can tell you, it's a really complicated system. It was kind of enjoyable watching Kent County Waters' presentation because it brought back interesting memories of work I had done there. But yes, I, I worked there for about 11 years.
I remember when your resume was shown to us back when you were hired and I'm like, I feel like Newport was in your background. Okay. Questions for Mr. Mason, members of the council? Uh, Councilwoman Shockley?
Hi, Mr. Mason. Thank you for coming in tonight. Just going back to the question that Councilmember Capaldi had asked earlier. When projects come up that would benefit Coventry or what would be your way of making sure to keep on top of Planning Committee and DPW projects? The other two people running are part of those commissions or town offices. And it does seem like partnerships are pretty important. So just anything you have in your background about that?
Well, yeah, absolutely. You know, if I, if I were to become a board member, I would imagine having meetings quite often with Mr. Perillo. And you know, I usually, we go by the chain of command and I'm sure he would involve Director of Public Works, Planning Commission, Planning Director. And we could have monthly, weekly meetings if that's so desired. And I would hope that would happen. Yes.
Further questions for Mr. Mason? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A discussion from members of the council? Vice President Blank?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ron Flynn to the Kent County Water Authority.
Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion?
Councilwoman Shockley? I think that the people who have put their hats in the ring for this are very qualified, which is a plus. I do wonder, would it be better to have an additional person in the room as opposed to someone who's already a part of the planning committee to talk to? Or is it better to have someone who's already on that committee? And maybe better versed. So I'm really like looking for some discussion here. I don't think I'm locked into any of the three or against. But that's just my question is someone else who's been involved in public work systems and water systems in other parts of Rhode Island to be able to give another perspective on things, meet regularly with our board, the head of our board and Director of Public Works. Just questions that I'm wondering if the rest of the council has feedback on. Vice President Blank?
I can start. For me, I do not want an employee of our town on this board. The, the executive director mentioned that the current people on the board are not municipal employees. These meetings, I think, start between around 3, 3:30 in the afternoon. And there are some site visits that they have to attend to during the day. Again, that's for me. Why I would not want one of the individuals on this board. For Mr. Flynn, he has north of 20 years of service to this town. He's very passionate. He is the chairman of one of our, of our most powerful boards. And the information that he leans from this board can assist this town greatly, in my opinion. So that's why I made the motion for Mr. Flynn.
Um, any other discussion on Mr. Flynn? So I will say a couple of concerns that I have with this appointment. It's nothing against Mr. Flynn and his service to the town. He's chair of one of the most important boards. I have concerns with someone being able to approve and be a part of a group that's approving a development and then go all over to a water board and then also be a part of decisions about hookups that may need to, to occur with those same developments. I also believe that we, if we have someone who wants to step up and serve our community and isn't involved in any other way, I think instead of having double dipping and having people be on multiple boards, we should give a real consideration to people who have not previously been involved and are showing interest. And quite frankly, I just, I, I think that Mr. Mason's resume is very impressive. He's not, I would agree with Mr. LeBlanc in terms of following suit with, that we don't hire an employee of the, or have an employee be an appointment. But I just think it's an opportunity to get other people involved. This is someone who has public works and public utility experience. I think that's huge. And I just would like to have, and I personally would like to see a division between planning and, and water and public utility. And just something to consider with some, an appointment that's as long as this. I also, we also know how much legislation is coming down to change zoning and housing regulations and codes and ordinances. And I would believe that our Planning Commission and the TRC is going to have their hands full with that. So that's my personal opinion, I don't know if there's any additional discussion. Councilwoman Capaldi had her hand up.
I do agree too, that someone shouldn't be already working in this town to be a part of that board. And I do agree that someone that's outside and that has stepped up, I think that's a really positive thing to be able to spend a lot of time on this board. And looking at everyone's background and the work that they've done. I, I do appreciate Ken Mason for this role.
Councilwoman Shockley? Just for my information, so if you are on certain commissions, one of them being the planning, you can't be on another town board, right? Is that how it works? I know this isn't a town board, I'm just asking. And what's the reason? Does anyone know? Like, is it because of time, is it because of conflict of interest, does anyone? I know it's not against the rules for it, what I'm saying is if it's a conflict of interest to be on another town board, a utility that's part. I, I feel like that we could have another head and another beneficial person where we already have someone strong on our Planning Commission.
Are there any counter-nominations? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pasqua?
I'm glad we're having this discussion. I think that the people that came forward for this appointment have great resumes. And they're, they're, they're very, very good, very good backgrounds that could be helpful. But I do agree with respect to a town employee being on this, that it may not be, may not be a good spot. I have the utmost respect for, for Mr. Flynn and his position and his contributions to the town. And Mr. Mason has a great resume as well. I think there is some value in having maybe another person here too, because it's tough to fill these board positions as it is.
Tough to get anybody to want to get involved.
Right. Yeah, it's, so there's some value there, and he comes in with a, with a very strong background to be able to perform well in this position, it looks like anyway, so I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Is there any further discussion or counter-nominations for the Kent County Water Authority?
I nominate Ken Mason.
Is there a second?
A second.
Nomination, motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilwoman Shockley, discussion on Mr. Mason's nomination? Councilwoman Shockley?
I really just do think that we have the odd situation of having someone apply for the position who's oddly qualified for it, for just a resident of the town. You know, I, I used to work for the state, and it was a choice between an internal candidate and an external. The other person had done the job in a different state, like it had already been their job. So it was one of those decisions you made where you would love to give the additional responsibility. But I just feel that Mr. Flynn is so positively involved in this community and this town, and will stay involved and stay engaged, that adding an extra person who has another town's insights, and could be a representative of Coventry who would understand at a different level the needs of this system. It just seems like a great addition to, to our team.
Any further discussion on the nomination of Ken Mason? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll. I'm sorry, on the nomination of Ken Mason. Oh, sorry, oh, that's right. We'll take them in order. So on, this, this vote is on the, the nomination of Ron Flynn, what? Who was the second on Mr. Flynn, Madam Clerk?
It was Pasqua.
If a second is withdrawn, the motion fails and there's not a vote. Then we move to the nomination for Mr. Mason. Oh, is there another second for Mr. Flynn? Hearing none, well, we have a motion by Councilwoman Capaldi and a second by Councilwoman Shockley for Ken Mason. Any further discussion on Mr. Mason? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to a report of the Town Manager. Item A, Budget Presentation FY25 on Capital Improvement Program, Five-Year Capital Improvement Program, Annual Capital Budget, Recommendations to the Town Council, according to Town Charter, Section eight point one-three, and Town Manager Budget Presentation and Message and Recommended Operating Budget to the Town Council.
That's a lot.
Yeah, who put this agenda together? Manager Perillo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, last night I sent you the proposed budget, the proposed capital, the proposed OPER, the current standing of our impact fees, along with the current status of our OPER funding. So all that's going to be digestible over the next couple of weeks, as you guys put together, and we vote on budget on the ninth. So I have a very brief, brief PowerPoint presentation compared to our previous presenter. First, I want to thank the council for your support over the last year, I can't believe a year's already gone by since I've started. But it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and get to know your passion and commitment to the town of Coventry. Your leadership and dedication to do what is best for all the residents of Coventry is much appreciated. To all of our employees throughout the town, thank you for what you do, every day you make a difference. I have witnessed firsthand the incredibly talented employees we have that serve our residents. And as our town continues to grow, we must address the additional needs of all of our residents, from our children to our seniors, and all aspects and facets of our public sector departments. From DPW to police, to the senior center, to schools, and to recreation, to name a few. We are establishing a solid foundation here in Coventry by getting our finances in order soon. Enhancing our police footprint with additional recruitment, moving our head with our school bond projects, investing in our infrastructure, expanding our grant capacity, re-establishing our sanitation division resources, and coming to the finish line on the Arnold Landfill Solar Project. As we provide these services, we confront these challenging financial times in search for a balance that encompasses all of our priorities. Health, public safety, education, and our infrastructure. So here are the highlights of my proposed budget. I'm proposing a three point nine-three percent increase to the tax levy. That is not the rate, the rate has not been set yet, but this is an increase to the levy alone is three point nine-three. Kerry the Tax Assessor continues to gather information on getting the tax rate ready to roll. But we're still reviewing new construction, property improvements, and the tax freeze verification is still ongoing. And that may have some people come off that, which may increase and help us when it comes to our tax rate. I'm proposing a three point six-one percent increase to the budget from one million six hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred thirty-six to one hundred and twenty million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Our state aid this year was increased by a whopping fifty-four thousand dollars. And our state education was increased by three point five-five percent, which comes out to nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. On the slides, I have some highlights of what kind of what we're looking to, what we've accomplished, what we hope to accomplish, and what we've done position-wise. So Director Sivetti's Deputy Finance Director was eliminated from the budget, my administrative assistant was eliminated from the budget. We're adding a full-time employee to canvassing as Laurie transitions out towards retirement, we have a full year of elections. Adding a full-time outreach librarian, as Megan said, she's currently part-time, and those duties and responsibilities are a little overwhelming now, so we're going to make that a full-time position. And in this budget, we also continue the Sunday hours, which is about seventeen thousand dollars, we fit that in. We've added a planning technician and a part-time CDBG coordinator to the planning department. One of our main goals this year was to start the construction of the community center, which is funded by two point eight-six million dollars from the state. We have our CDBG grant funding for four hundred and ninety-five thousand for MacArthur Boulevard. That hopefully is going to start sometime this summer. We're moving forward with the Pave It Forward program, we have a million dollars in OPER for that, along with five hundred million, correction, five hundred thousand in Kevin's budget. The Johnsons Boulevard drainage project, which was the number one project on our list last year for engineering, that should be completed this year. The North Road drainage project will also be completed this year, that's currently in the design stage. We're also appropriating a little bit more money for that, that's coming in a little higher than originally thought. Hope to have our hazard mitigation plan and our comp plan completed this year. We're beginning our new investment in our sanitation department by ordering the three new trucks, updating the transfer station, and implementing a new yard waste program that Kevin will be introducing hopefully next month. We're also budgeted for our summer festival, food trucks, live music, and the fireworks, along with the concert series. And we should be utilizing our grant money, should be coming in at three point two-five from Senator Reed for the high school. And I got a call today from Rep. Magg's office, he wants to come sometime next week and present us a big fat check for seven hundred and seven thousand for the police department, so we'll get that, we'll get that. The capital improvement budget is budgeted for five hundred eleven thousand seven-ten. That's been dispersed in the following manner, one hundred fifty-one thousand seven-ten for recreation. I'm sorry, for DPW, recreation is going to get a hundred thirty-nine thousand, schools a hundred and thirty. Police Department is one car, fifty-five thousand, and the thirty-six thousand in engineering is for the North Road project. Also proposing an OPER, appropriating two point six-seven million dollars of OPER money. As you know, that money has to be appropriated by December of this year. So I'm using a lot of it in this capacity, one million dollars for paving, seven hundred thousand for a new Lake Tayo gatehouse, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to get the redevelopment agency up and running, four hundred and twenty-five thousand for the high school pumping bill, that is outstanding, and ninety thousand dollars for a dump truck with the plow for Raina and Recreation. Let's go back to slides down into OPER, right there, so we got ten point four million in OPER. We have about three point six million dollars left. If the council agrees with my proposed appropriation of two point six-seven, that'll leave the council approximately nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to commit this year. It'll probably go higher than that, currently getting reimbursement from the state on the paving program that we started last year. So as that money comes back in, that number will go up. But that's a ballpark, what you guys have to work with, around a million dollars, again, has to be appropriated by December this year, spent by December of twenty-six.
Councilwoman Shockley? So when you say the money's coming back in from what we already gave, what we've already spent on the roads?
Yes.
Once it comes back, is it considered ARPA funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Can't go back to OPER?
So we can spend it in any way that's appropriate at that point, put it back into the roads, do whatever?
If I may, you would have to look at the terms of the reimbursement, if it's reimbursement for paving, for example. Depending upon the terms of the reimbursement, it could be put back into the paving program for additional paving.
But it's based more on the terms of the reimbursement than on ARPA?
Yeah, we just, we can't replenish ARPA funds, once ARPA funds leave the
That's actually the answer I was looking for.
Leave, leave bond.
No, that's good, I wasn't sure if, because it came from, if it gets reimbursed, I had to go, I'm guessing that was your question?
Yeah, that's a different, that's a discussion we had earlier today on something else, thank you, Mr. Spicero.
But yeah, let's, let's get definitive answers on that, to see if that's just a great way of reseating our paving program, or if it becomes more of a general fund, maybe just CIP?
Yeah.
So just curious there.
Finally, the school budget.
One second, Vice President LeBlanc?
Question?
Yes.
I think I saw seven hundred thousand for a gatehouse for Lake Tayo?
Correct, yep, so that
How is it seven hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't it like a, I feel like it's like a four-by-four, like gatehouse right now.
So originally, we were at, I want to say, one forty-five, one fifty was the number originally. We actually had a diver go down there and actually investigate, and it's pretty much, there's nothing left to it. So he's predicting anywhere between six and eight hundred thousand dollars to replace it, he's conducting his final evaluation now. And speaking to Joe and Kevin and, and the leaders, that probably is the number one priority now. Last year it was Johnsons Boulevard, this year it's the gatehouse. Could it last longer? Yes, do we want to roll the dice on that? I think failure, failure to that could be catastrophic.
I'm not saying that we don't, I
Yeah.
It was like one forty.
Correct, correct, yeah, so that's, that's, that's the number right now. Again, that's, that's an estimate by the company that provided the diver, but we don't have that in hard numbers yet, that's, that's to come. School budget, so my proposal for the school budget locally, which goes towards maintenance of effort, is two hundred twenty-five thousand nine twenty-nine. This number was derived by a few components. When Director Sivetti and I were kind of reviewing their budget, we think there's some potential shortfalls in there that they may not be able to reach some of their goals. So we put a hundred thousand dollars towards maintenance of effort for those. In addition to that, there's been, not an argument, not a dispute, a discussion about cell tower revenue, seventy-four thousand dollars of cell tower revenue. The cell towers are on the schools, however, the town owns the schools and the buildings, so where does that really fall with the schools or with the town? So in this budget, we're giving them the seventy-four thousand dollars to eliminate that discussion and make it part of their budget going forward. The last component of that two twenty-five is the town of Coventry contributes to the town, to the school's SRP pension program, which is rather unique to Coventry, doesn't really happen a lot of other places. That number went down by fifty-one thousand dollars this year, so we're also rolling that into the local aid and the maintenance of effort, which makes up that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we have a separate line item for a hundred and forty thousand dollars to fulfill, we advise, the Order General we would do as part of the deficit reduction plan. So the schools identified a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit in FY22. When that was brought to the attention of the Order General, who we meet with monthly, he wanted a plan on how that was going to be addressed. The school's plan was for the town to give them a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the next five years.
Excuse me, but did this council agree to that plan?
They have not. It was presented to the Order General in that capacity, and it was not approved by the council, no.
So they just asserted that these people are going to give us money as fact, without actually asking the town first?
Yes.
Okay.
So in order to go along with, or in order to fulfill what the school, AKA the town, has told the Order General, we have committed that hundred and forty thousand, not part of MOU, but in a separate line item. So I know the school is disappointed in the local aid dispersment, but in total, between local aid, OPER, capital, the deficit reduction plan of one forty, and the increase to our debt service for the schools, which is approximately two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, The school appropriation in this budget totals one million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Manager Perlo, can you just remind me again, um, the total cost of the pump truck that the town um, approved? The purchase of for their um, defunct.
Two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars.
And then I think on, it was on your ARPA slide, how much are we paying for pumping until the solution's fixed?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So that's about another six hundred and twenty-five thousand?
That's included in that one point one.
That's included.
Yes, yeah, exactly, yes. Um, so in conclusion, uh, I know the school is disappointed probably in the local aid appropriation. Uh, however, they have extensively researched a path forward to realize the savings they need in order to balance their budget. Over the last few months, as discussions revolved around the school restructuring plan, it was evident that the superintendent and the school committee. Felt there was a better educational model going forward than included the reimagining of providing educational services in the town of Coventry. Not only would it be the right decision educationally, but also financially, as it would have saved them an estimated two point one million dollars in their estimation. They spent hundreds of hours putting these plans together, explaining why they did what they were doing, what they were doing and how they were doing. The restructuring was promoted as being educationally sound and fiscally responsible. The school department has done their due diligence in identifying a projected budget deficit and came up with a viable plan to address it. Which at the end of the day was not implemented for reasons unknown to me. The town will continue to support all of its departments as we head into difficult financial times, budgeting needs versus wants. The end. I can ask, answer any questions if you have any?
Uh, Councilor Shockley. So, um, I would like it if we could continue discussions with the school, um, and. The superintendent with the school committee about further um, looking into that other course of action. Um, I do feel as if it needs to be presented to um, local parents and local community. Um, as a representative of the town council, who is not an expert on um. Education, I chose not to overly speak about this in public forums. Um, I wasn't part of the research, but I will say, being on the school building committee. Part of the reason for wanting to consolidate schools was to um, have bands of students in the same schools. Um, it is logical how it cuts down on um, staff.
Hmm.
Because of the fact that you don't have to hit, you don't hit maximums in five different schools, but instead you've consolidated it. Um, I think having teachers who teach the same, same subject matter together, kids who are in the same age bands. Um, being together, I, I see the sense of it, um. I definitely think there are things to look into, such as how to get the kids to and from. In a way where parents are going to be home and parents are gonna be available for our younger students. Um, but it has worked in other towns, and the fact of the matter is, those towns are changing, not because it didn't work, but because the money they're getting. Is incentivizing newer and fewer, or a new school building um, for them. So those changes aren't based on the other pathway not working. So I think if it's a way of saving millions of dollars, um. I'd like to, to see those numbers solidly, like I don't wanna just have the school tell me it's gonna save millions of dollars, but I'd like to see them, um.
Yeah, we have, we haven't seen any of those, that, that was a number that they, they threw out there.
So we wanna see that, because I have a number of questions about the logic to this slide.
Yep.
Um, but I don't know that I really wanna go into it before knowing if this is a possible path forward. In time for a twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, so there's a number of questions there, and I think that we're making a budget based on you should have and maybe. Instead of this is the situation we're currently in.
Totally understand, and I, and I think the, again, the balancing act is, I think the town and its departments are growing. While at the same time, the schools are not getting smaller, but there's still, there's less students there. So I think, we're, we're more than willing to work with the schools to help them get to a point where it makes sense. But right now, I think, again, I think they've done all the research, they've done all the work, the path is already set, there's a way to make this difference up as opposed to. DPW or, or police or some other department where it doesn't have a path to get whatever money is not available in their budget.
Like I said, I have a number of questions on the logic that was used to come to this amount. Um, but I, I don't know how far into it I wanna go, without knowing if there's another outcome. Um, because right now, all I see is we're looking at something like. Having to utilize a truck and utilize money to um, haul sewage. Which is not helping with any of the actual school costs, it just came up as an issue. That luckily, we have this ARPA funding still available to fund, because otherwise, we'd find ourselves in a terrible spot. Whether it's the town, the school, the money would have had to come from someplace, it happens to be available through ARPA, and. We have to consider ourselves lucky to a point. The only question I am gonna ask is, you said there was a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall, where, in this year's budget? Or in their projections for next year?
So we were looking at some of their projections at three percent at the other night, doing a little bit of a dive, but Sovedi thinks that they shorted themselves in some areas. Around the ballpark number of four hundred, obviously, they put, they made, some of their projections we think were a little low. Um, so we think they're, they're gonna come in um, with a slight deficit, so that's why we gave them that hundred thousand dollars, a little bit of a cushion.
So if they level funded, they'd be four hundred thousand dollars short.
You wanna?
Yeah, I guess what we were looking at, we, we got, received some of the detail from the business manager and superintendent, just trying to go through those line items. Also speaking with one of the council members at the last meeting after the um, the school presented. You know, just some adjustments were made to utility costs, which the school feels they're going to be able to achieve those because of new metering credits and different things they reached into. But then more so, we started focusing on just their budgets for benefits, okay, so we, I made similar comment last year when we looked at the former. Business manager's budget, it appears when they're budgeting for their benefits, so the pensions, healthcare. They constantly utilize the previous year's budget, they're not looking at actual figures. So when we looked at the current year actual, where they're at, it looks like they're gonna be over budget for this year. Um, we're still waiting to hear back from the director, um, or from the business manager. I know when they presented last week to this council, they said they think they're gonna be break even this year, I don't know if that's going to be true. Uh, but I don't have all the details, cuz I'm not, you know, working with their stuff daily, so I just asked them to go back and look at. The, again, ma- one main item was the pension, so the state pension system where their rates decreasing slightly. Although we see the compensations going up, you know, significantly with the raises. But then just more so looking at their current year actual through the month of February, projecting that through the end of June. It looks like there's gonna be a shortfall, and again, when they did their budget for fiscal twenty-six or twenty-five, similar to what they did in twenty-four. They just take the previous year number, maybe add a little, or in this case, they budgeted the same exact number for.
I guess it just gets to be more of a loss, so we think they're not gonna hit the number they thought they would have for twenty twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four. So, we're giving the money in this year's budget to make up for last year's losses?
No, we just think that next year's projected twenty-five budget may not be realistic, even the way it stands. So they may need more than what they're, they're looking.
So they asked for two million dollars. We think they need more than that, but we wanna give them two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Is, I'm, I'm lost, I think, so you're saying the only way this works. Is if they reconsolidate the schools and all their numbers were right.
Reconsolidate the schools, I won't speak for the time, I mean, reconsolidating the schools, I think is the first step forward to try to. See what that number, but again, we've heard numbers from two to three million dollars that they could be savings, we haven't seen any of that detail.
Right, so I think that we need so much more information, like, right now, we're depending. On something that the school department, the school committee, who is the body, has not even agreed to vote on yet. Mind you, it was pulled, so I don't know the reason for that. Um, but if we make a budget two million dollars short. As we're going into next year, and the school committee votes it down. Whether we say to them, well, you should have voted for it, if they didn't, this hole is humongous. So I just don't think we can talk about it that much tonight, until we get more plausible information.
Obviously, if they wanna present their savings numbers to the director, he will definitely look at them, but we, they haven't accessed those to us.
Sure.
They haven't provided that access to us.
One hundred percent, I, I wish we had more information, we need more information, but right now, we've made a whole budget. Proposal based on they should do this.
Well, they don't have to do that, that's just the pathway that they started, that they said they could make that, that, that those savings are, can be realized.
I, let's see, like, let's see how they're doing their numbers to determine these savings, let's see the plausibility of it passing the school committee. Or even when it could, so that we can actually base our budget on things that are happening, as opposed to the things that we think they should do. Cuz we don't get to make those decisions. And if you think we cut our way to them having to make the decision, then I definitely wanna see those numbers. To make sure that we're forcing an issue that's worth forcing.
I mean, I don't know what our authority is to ask them for the, we can ask for the numbers, but the authority for them to provide them, I don't know what that. Recourse is, I don't know if they have to give them to us, we can ask for sure, but I don't know if they have to provide that to us.
This is a dangerous budget, if we don't know what they're doing or what it could save them if they were to do it. If they give us plausible numbers, and our decision as a town council was, you know what, if you can do this. Then we can't give you this much more money with this other good option out there. Um, but if they come back and they're like, we thought it would be this for savings. But really, it looks like with costs for doing these other things, it's not gonna be that.
Yeah.
We need to know that before we make a whole year's budget.
Yep, again, I was just going on by information that was, that I knew of, and again, the number they threw out there was.
We have, we have a calendar, we have to stick to, and if, if the manager asks for that information. And he, the parents ask for that information, and no one could supply it.
Dangerous, if we take, if even our town finance director.
Not to take this deficit by the, bull by the horns, the Order General isn't screwing around.
Hillary, I don't disagree with you, that we should really look into this other option. And if we discover that it is a financial, it, I think educationally, the school system's behind it, that's not my decision to make. If fiscally, it's the way to go, and we decide as a council to force their hand in a budget.
Yeah.
Then let's do that, but if we're going into it not knowing the numbers, this is a department of this town. They go under, we do too, so let's not pretend we can just say, we're cutting it and. You know, you go float in the wind, they're part of this town, one of us doesn't fail without the other. One of us doesn't succeed without the other, so it's not responsible of us to say, we think you should do this, and we're gonna make a budget. In accordance with what we think you should do, we don't even really know if it's the best.
Is it responsible to admit that you know you have a significant deficit and have conversations with the public? About a plan to reduce that deficit, and then decide, nope, actually, we're just gonna ask for. What we think we need to fill that gap, and oh, by the way, we find out it's actually not even enough to meet the deficit that's projected.
There's a question as to.
That's not responsible.
No, I agree, I think we have to really look into that plan. I, I don't disagree with that, what I'm saying is, no one has hard numbers.
But we're not the school committee.
But we are the town of Coventry, and they are a department of our.
I think Chris, I think Chris and Don have hard numbers.
Then let's see him.
I can't think that they would say a two million dollar savings to the Order General, if that wasn't realistic.
They said a hundred and forty thousand, they didn't know if it was realistic, they, they hoped.
Though that was, I can't, the hu- the hundred forty thousand, they have what they know to be a seven hundred thousand dollar cumulative deficit. As of June thirtieth to twenty-two, and because of that deficit, they have to put together a five-year deficit reduction plan. Which is where they came up with the one four, that has nothing to do with.
The amount I don't question, it's where they thought it would come from.
Correct, but if I could, can I just add a couple things, just, uh, apologize.
Oh, go, go.
Over the last week, right, we had presentation from all of department directors. So this council was presented with the, what the directors were requesting, including the school department, so you had a request of roughly seven point eight million. Significant request, the town manager was tasked with trying to put a proposal together to get a budget, stay within the four percent. Levy increase, so we reduced that seven point eight million dollar ass down to four point two million. In doing so, we were able to reduce, you know, we reduced department head requests, town departments, excluding the school department. By one point eight million, we reduced the school's request by one point seven. So again, this is a town manager's proposed budget, right, trying to get that, I agree a hundred percent what you're saying. We need to get additional facts, but keep in mind, even with the three-year budget projection that was put together a month or two months ago. You know, I had projected saying, okay, we can give the school department a million, at that million, they're still a million to a million and a half short. So at what step, or at what point is saying, okay, if we give them a million, they're a million and a half short, if we give them three hundred thousand. They're two million short, at some point, there still has to be that discussion, how are they gonna make that cut?
One hundred percent, what's so hard though, is we're kind of coming from a place of, um, a large assumption. But this is a big assumption, so I think it's a dangerous way to go into a budget for a town. Is making an assumption on something that we don't hold the um, authority over to do. I would love, I would love to push in that direction, if that's what the superintendent. If I was gonna ask anyone about what to do for an education system, it would be Don Howard, cuz he is the, no, no, um, just one moment. Um, and I'd, I'd like to see it, and if that's the way that we can cut this, then it's fantastic, because it's done.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why, like I said, I have a lot of things I have questions about, but I don't really wanna ask them all, until I know the plausibility of this.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Passwell, you've had it, your hand up for a while.
I wonder if we're overstepping here, because the school committee has their own authority to balance their budget, make decisions, take on votes, and if we. Are told what their savings are from certain plans, and we are informed and educated, it doesn't actually mean that they're going to happen. So, I mean, they could tell us that they could save two point one, they could prove to us that they could save two point one, but at the end. It's a political body, it's influenced by its voters, and if the voters come out and they don't want them to do that, then there's nothing saying it's gonna happen. And that's not gonna happen at the time for this budget to be accepted, so. You know, in the case of the town, if we don't get state funding in certain situations, we're forced with, with hard decisions on how to manage our operations internally, because we lose that opportunity. To have that outside funding, so in this situation, the school committee is a governing body that governs just the schools, and we are tasked with governing the town of Coventry. And its budget as a whole, so in my opinion, we have to, we have to look at everything. If we can afford to give the school something, then we give it to them, if we can't, and we have to cut back on it to maintain operations globally, then we do that. And we put trust into the elected school committee to make those decisions, and there are rules, laws and, and things in place and policies in place. That will guide them in that situation, that they're gonna, that they're gonna have to follow. But um, I, I don't, I, I worry that we're overstepping, because we don't have control of the school committee, and no matter what they tell us. It doesn't mean it's actually going to happen.
Um, I wanna touch on something really important that you just said, which is, we can't tell them what to do. But more importantly, as you've indicated, ultimately, this town council is a fiduciary. Arbiter and leader of this town, we are ultimately held responsible and liable, even for those decisions made by the school committee. Cuz they are a department of the town. Um, so I wanted to make that very clear. Um, and as I mentioned, they acknowledge that they have a huge deficit by having the conversation about that plan. And I wanna be clear too, that this isn't just something that's unique to Coventry, when I talk to my colleagues in municipal government at the League of Cities and Towns. Mayors, town administrators, other council presidents from all over the state. There's no district that's safe from having these conversations, this isn't unique to us. This isn't, you know, only Coventry is having to consider this, everywhere they're considering consolidation plans, or they're seeing. I think Tiverton in particular is staring down almost a four million plus deficit in their school department, so it's worse than our situation. Um, so. These conversations are happening everywhere. Um, Manager Perlo, I just had a question for you, um, when you had your initial conversations with uh, the superintendent and the finance director from the school department. And they showed the increase they were projecting, what did they attribute the majority of that increase to?
Salary and benefits, eighty percent, they said salary and benefits.
And the first year of the teacher's contracts goes into effect in, or is it in FY twenty-five?
It's three per- three percent this year, three, two, five, next year.
So FY twenty- So FY twenty-five is the three and a quarter percent increase? Okay.
Yes.
So again, the school committee, as you stated last year with the vote, the school committee wanted the contracts. They voted to approve the contract. You had stated that we didn't have a place to tell them what contract they could approve or not approve, and it was up to them. At some point, you have to take responsibility for the financial decisions that you make as well. Not to mention, I think the, our management team, our town man, our town finance director and town manager showed them the fiscal note and what this would do to the budget at the time and it was ignored. So I, I have to ask at some point, again, we can't tell them what to do. The only, the only way that we can make sure that we take accountability fiscally for the entire town is through our appropriation and that's it.
And I think just to go back to last year, I believe they came in at one-six, so one-seven, I believe their ask was last year and the council gave them five hundred thousand. And according to them, according to their numbers, they're right on budget right now. So whatever cuts, changes they did last year, they made their budget work.
How much in ARPA did we give them last year roughly? Do you remember?
A hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, so three hundred and forty thousand plus the five hundred thousand. Okay. Um, Vice President Blank.
Councilwoman Shockley mentioned that there's some dangerous things going on with this budget. For me, it's not the schools. For me, and I have to bring it up, I apologize, but we don't have, so private companies, they use their issued financial statements to make appropriate budgets. We don't even have our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two financial statements. And we don't have our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three financial statements. So for the public to know the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three statements were actually legally due by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And, and so this council is making a budget dangerously, in my opinion, based off of I, I guess we can go off of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one actually issued financial statements as the last independent, independently issued uh, statements that we can use. I believe that that's dangerous and I, I just want the public to know that I've been asking for these statements for, I don't know, I feel like it's been at least twenty months. Um, and I know that the auditor general is working with the school, working with the town to get these statements issued, but um, are we gonna have the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two statements before this budget?
Yes, but the latest, the meeting you had with the order general, CLA told us we should have a draft in two weeks.
So two weeks would be April.
Yes.
So we have to provisionally vote on a budget April ninth, while we have draft statements for April ninth.
We should have the draft statement prior to April ninth from the meeting we had last week with CLA and the order general. They told us two weeks.
And then my, my last comment is there's been a hypothetical discussion about another department coming into the municipality. That would be the fire departments hypothetically. Now, as uh, Finance Director Sveti just said, uh, all the directors came in front of us, school and all of our current departments asking for seven million dollars. Can we pass a budget right now for seven million dollars, Dan?
No.
Correct. Um, it would go over the cap, correct?
Yes.
So again, I, I don't even know how hypothetically we could add that hypothetical department to our town right now. It doesn't make any sense, but it has to be brought up because it's been floated around um, as a end-all solution for the fire districts. I don't, we can't even afford our current district, so it has to be brought up right now.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the total of that is around ten or eleven million of the four fire districts, I believe is the ballpark number.
Understood. Um, in any event, I, I think there's a lot of dangerous things going on with this budget. Uh, remember Shockley? Um, so I agree with your, your comment in, in part, but I also agree with uh, President Lima. Um, the school has a budget. They said to us that they could afford that contract. Apparently to me, based off of these numbers, they cannot. So that's what I have to say currently.
So at this stage, the next time we talk about this budget would be April ninth. I'd say your door is open to council members if they'd like to come and meet with you and Mr. Sveti individually and dive in deeper.
Yes.
Um, and also April ninth is the night that the council would bring forward any amendments they'd like to make.
Yeah, provisional budget and any amendments. And if the council wants the directors dead, ask them questions on the ninth, I could have the directors at that meeting as well.
Okay, appreciate that.
And I'll reach out to uh, Mr. Coward and see if um, they want to pass on any financial information to us regarding the uh, proposed consolidation that they were contemplating and see what that, see where we go from there.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Um, do you want to stay up there for your other item?
The Fussed O'Neil contract, is it?
Yes.
So the Fussed O'Neil contract, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, I believe, that's going to be coming out of that five hundred and forty thousand dollars that we have at the Round Infrastructure Bank. Is a resolution later on in the agenda that our uh, bond council, Mr. Ferrara put together because that five hundred and forty thousand, the wording has to be uh, amended to that twenty thirteen bond in order for that money to be accessed. So once that resolution's passed, he can work on that part of it. And then the three hundred and seventy-nine for the design and engineering of the high school project will be coming out of that funding source. So I'm just looking for the council to ratify, or ratify that agreement.
Just to, just to clarify, this was on our previous agenda two weeks ago. We were just, we had this back on here.
This is a separate, separate agreement. The other one, the other fuss contract was for DM one seventy-six. This is a different fuss contract.
Oh, okay. Cause I know there were two contracts.
Yes, general code that's coming up and GZA with the solicitors coming up, yes.
To get discussion rolling, do I hear motion to ratify the uh, Fuss O'Neil agreement?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Pascal?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kapaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to report of other town officers and officials, um, Solicitor Steven Angel.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the general code contract uh, is before you. The council was interested in the fiscal note. Um, my understanding and talking with Mr. Sveti and the town manager, it is a expenditure that is included in the um, town clerk's budget. So that's the update on that. And we, we're asking to be able to sign this contract and have it ratified by the council.
Do I hear a motion to ratify the general code contract?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Pascal?
I'll second.
Second by Vice President Blank. Any discussion? Councilman Shockley.
Um, is it in the town clerk's twenty twenty-five budget?
Yes.
So I want this to happen. I think it's a great idea. Should we be approving stuff for the twenty twenty-five budget that we haven't approved? We haven't approved the budget yet. So should we be approving items that are getting budgeted for? But that haven't necessarily been approved when we haven't done our line item yet.
Was there a line you maybe had in mind from FY twenty-four? I'm open to other ideas.
No, but that's a really good question. Um, I don't know if there's a line for it in twenty twenty-four. I just, we did it a couple of weeks ago too, and I just thought it was a bit odd that we were approving things that we hadn't put into this budget. But instead we're part of a budget that hadn't been fully executed yet.
Well, if, if I may, Madam President, you, you're committing, you're ratifying the contract to commit to the expenditure. If you wait until after the budget passes or, or goes into effect to commit to the expenditure, it will not get done in twenty twenty-five. Like, that's just how these things get queued up. It's really no different than the next contract we're going to talk about. You're committing to an expenditure. But, you know, I you're committing to the expenditure.
Yeah, I know, I know it's a good idea and I don't want to say no to it. I'm just wondering, is it financially prudent to approve something that's part of a budget that has not been approved?
Any further discussion on the general code contract ratification? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kapaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
No.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, one in the negative, motion passes.
Mrs. Solicitor?
Uh, next is the ratification of the GZA contract. Mr. LeBlanc had raised a question whether or not the forty percent stakeholder in the PRP group would be willing to pay forty percent of the oversight services, which I think was just under seventeen thousand, uh, related to the construction of the solar array. As I indicated to the council uh, two weeks ago, my inclination was that since the forty percent shareholder in the PRP group does not benefit from the solar array, uh, the contract relative to selling the power. The town, uh, a hundred percent of that benefit inures to the town. Uh, my inclination was they would say no. I went to them, they said no. And they also indicated to me that at the time of negotiating the placement of the solar array and the power contract, they had asked to be included in that and included in the revenues. And they were told no by the town. So their answer is no on forty percent reimbursement on the almost seventeen thousand dollar construction oversight.
Vice President Blank.
My recollection from the last time we talked about this, um, it was said that the town council could vote on it. And then once we voted on it, with the town uh, assuming all the expense, that we would reach out to them to see if they would chip in. So I just wanted to see if we could reach out to them first before the town voted on it. That's all. But I, I appreciate them. I appreciate you asking them.
Any further discussion? Uh, do I hear a motion to ratify the GZA contract?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Councilmember Kapaldi. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kapaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to resolutions of the council, item A, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one affirming the award of a contract for cemetery grounds maintenance through global maintenance. It's pages sixty-six to seventy-seven in your packet. Mr. McGee, I don't, is this one item you, that's you?
Good evening. This is a contract for the perpetual care cemeteries, which we have forty-one in town. Uh, this is a three-year contract. Uh, we went out to advertise bid. We received two bidders that came in and the lowest qualified bidder was global maintenance, which is before you tonight for approval. We included in this uh, resolution two on-call additional cuttings in the event that we have the kind of, with us, summer that we had last year, we had rain every, every week. Grass cutting was growing more than once a month to cut. So this would give us the option to use it. Doesn't necessarily mean that we would use it, but at least here we'll have the opportunity to use it. And then includes the spring and fall cleanup and the monthly service.
I, unless I missed it, is there a list of the, all the cemeteries in the um, information you gave us?
I I might have missed that.
I have, I can, I provide it to the council.
Yeah, the, the same list of forty-one that we've had for the last ten years.
Just, it's a part of the contract, so I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
And a quick question. So just to be quite frank, I, I had received outreach in the life of the last contract about the provider we had awarded not keeping up with the maintenance and there were issues and I got complaints, people going on holidays to visit grave sites and the grass was not trimmed. Is this the same vendor that was in the previous contract?
This is the same vendor from the previous contract. However, the town manager and I had met with the owner and the principals of the company and let them know what the situation was. And we came up with the alternative that adding in the additional on-call cuts. Because if they would cut it at the beginning of the month and they had a month's process, they wouldn't be cutting until the following month, but the grass was growing twice as much that you would normally, even at home. Most people would in July and August would be able to cut it once every other week. Well, it was growing so that it had to be cut every week. And yet they were, your only contract to do once a month. So we're on call with them to make that call if the grass is growing. I didn't include it as a permanent because last year was the last year of the El Nino event and this is not, this is the first year without it. So we're looking to see if this summer is going to be the same outlet that we had last year and then we'll deal with it separately.
We also adjusted, uh, we had them prioritize the bigger cemeteries, the forward-facing cemeteries, all the cemeteries that are part of this forty-one, kind of tucked into neighborhoods and other areas. Um, so we told them they need to focus on the big ones at one sixteen and one seventeen, the ones that are again, uh, front-facing, uh, the bigger ones and then work on the smaller ones. So they're going to change their schedule in order to make sure that that gets addressed. And hopefully, again, we don't have the same year we had last year when it came to, came to, comes to rain.
And if for some reason the day fails to perform, we were talking to the solicitor to cancel, you know, with the second bidder I've already spoken to. He's ready to pull in, in the event that this doesn't happen the way we want it.
Okay. Uh, Vice President Blank, you had your hand.
Uh, you asked a question. Um, I also had received some outreach, but uh, we, we got some answers. Um, so I think I'm on set.
Okay. Any other discussion on this resolution? Yes, Vice President Blank.
And how do we monitor that they actually are doing the cuts?
Yeah, we actually get the, they provide us with pictures after they've cut it, dated pictures. And then I actually go out there and inspect to make sure they are being done.
Got it.
When, with the bill comes in.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Councilwoman Kapaldi?
Keeping them on call, is that extra?
Yes, this uh, individual price located in here for the on-call price. The bid shows that the additional cuts would be forty-nine hundred dollars each. So I didn't want, that's just under ten thousand. I didn't want to carry two additional ones. I didn't want to bring up twenty thousand. Let's see what, what we are. If we're using them, if we don't, don't need them, then we're not going to use them.
Any further discussion? Councilman Shockley?
Just if you happen to know, what was the cost of this contract up until this year?
I believe it was thirty-nine thousand for the cuts and I don't have the.
So it's a budgeted line item and it's about the same?
The same. It's actually a little more this year. It's came in higher, but it's been a budgeted item for the last ten years.
Do I hear a motion to approve resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Shockley?
Awesome.
Second by Vice President Blank. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kapaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to move to Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, approving inter-alia and amendment to the loan agreement with Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. It's on pages seventy-nine to eighty in our packet. Manager Pirlo, are you speaking to this?
Sure. So this is the document I mentioned earlier that came from our bond council. Updating the twenty thirteen original bond for that two point four million. This will allow us to access the five hundred and forty thousand dollars currently at the infrastructure bank. So I could have the solicitor jump in if he wants to, but that's my understanding of it. Um, basically just gives us official access to that uh, leftover undispersed funding.
Uh, to get discussion rolling, do I hear a motion to approve resolution?
Make motion.
Motion by Councilmember Shockley. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Pascal. Any discussion on the resolution? Vice President Blank.
Are there any additional costs uh, for us to access this cash that we're incurring?
Not to my knowledge. Interesting. Thank you.
Did you want to add something, Assistant Manager Bravon? Oh.
No. It's money we've been paying interest on for years without using the money. So you know, we've got a project that it fits in. We're going to pay the interest that's using money.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kapaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three approving the use of a portion of the undispersed loan amount, five hundred and forty thousand from twenty thirteen. five hundred and forty thousand from twenty thirteen for the design and engineering of the Coventry High School sewer extension at a cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars. This is on page eighty-one of our packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Shockley. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, requesting to utilize impact fees for the purchase of wooden raised beds and supplies for the Coventry Community Garden. This is on pages eighty-two, uh, just eighty-two in your packet, and we have Director Robillard here to speak to this. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Um, the community garden started in, uh, two thousand and nine, uh, with the blessings of the council at that time. And everything that is grown in the garden, um, goes to the, uh, Community Food Bank here in town and feeds our families in need. We now have a greenhouse at the senior center where we start the seeds. So it's kind of a full community circle. Um, we built the beds, um, with, uh, with grant funds in the past, and we've gotten some local businesses to assist us with the building of the shed and a couple of other things that are over there. Uh, community service projects, uh, there's a variety of youth-based groups that, uh, help us during the summertime. We have, uh, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, four-H Club. Uh, we have seniors. At one time, we had a ninety-three-year-old person and a three-year-old person in the, in the garden volunteering at the same time. Uh, so what I'm asking for is utilization of impact fees. I cannot believe the price of wood right now. It's absolutely insane. So we're looking for up to, uh, seven thousand dollars to purchase the, uh, wood for the forty-three beds. Doesn't seem like there's forty-three beds across the street, but there is. And also funds to, um, get the, um, seed starting and the, um, heat for our, um, greenhouse at the senior center to complete that circle and, uh, get, you know, nutritious, uh, vegetables and fruits to our folks in need at our, um, community, um, food bank.
Uh, to get discussion rolling, do I hear a motion to approve resolution?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thanks, Coach. Uh, motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion or questions for Director Robillard?
You couldn't get a grant?
Uh, not, not for this one. Uh, there is one in progress, um, with the Rhode Island Foundation.
I'm just kidding.
Any further discussion?
Serious about grants, I can't hold it. Thank you.
Uh, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item F, items to be added to the Rhode Island Environmental Management's project priority list. Ty Oak Lake, Friar Point, Stormwater Quality Improvement Green Infrastructure Project, Sandy Bottom Pump Station Evaluation Improvements, Design of Wastewater Facility Plan, Planning Area Number Nine, Woodland Manor Pump Station Evaluation Improvements, Coventry High School On-Site Wastewater Treatment System, Design of Stormwater Green Infrastructure Along Ty Oak Avenue, including the public boat ramp on Ty Oak Avenue. Um, I have to say, I appreciate that the council is being consulted about what goes on the priority list, and I think Vice President LeBlanc would agree with me. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc.
I have one comment and one motion. So my comment was exactly that. Past councils, uh, these, uh, items did not come in front of. They just magically appeared on the Rhode Island, uh, Environment Management Prior, um, Project Priority List. So I appreciate that we're actually, uh, voting on them. Um, I will make a motion to take these as a block. No, it was actually, uh, President's idea, but okay.
That was.
It's a wonderful idea, trust me.
Yeah. You've stayed. Would you like to make any comments?
Wouldn't make me stay longer.
Listen, I tried.
No, I'm, I'm with you. Uh, Maria Broadbent is assistant town manager. So this is an annual event. Uh, the project priority list, the projects that are on the list are projects that are eligible for, um, funding that are related to water pollution, wastewater systems that can access not only the clean water, the SRFNs, but also, um, other grant opportunities. So some of these, pretty sure we've got funding coming for them, but when the money's not in the bank yet and the project priority list is due next week, you, you got them on the list again. I've, I've, uh, had to update a couple of them. Um, the, the work for the pump stations is much more expensive than it was when those pump stations were evaluated. They're key to our system. Um, we'll keep trying to find money wherever we can. Um, same as for Planning Area Number Nine for the sewer system. Um, I did add two projects on there this year. Uh, one is to, um, as you know, we got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars a couple of weeks ago. The big check that almost blew away in the wind. For the design of, uh, stormwater project that improve the water quality at Ty Oak. And this funding would be to actually do the construction of that project for which we'll, you know, I'll personally pursue grants and look for that. And, and the other project that I've added on here is, um, to design some stormwater management to improve the area around our boat ramp on Ty Oak Avenue. We own that property. Um, there's a mishmash of, of ownership of property down there, and, and frankly, the whole street could use just something to make it more appealing. Uh, across from my favorite department store, um, Nor- Northern Thrift. Yes. Um, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's really not that attractive, and there's really an opportunity to, there's a lot of water that flows through there, and you see all the bull rush, the fragminis, like, uh, Lake Taco was going to cut down on, on, on their end. Um, some of that really should be cleaned up. It's an aquatic invasive species. So this would be to, um, design something to get everybody's opinion on what would make that look better with the eye towards improving the water quality in the lake. And that's all for me. Can I go home? No, just kidding.
And I just have to say, when we, when, um, Assistant Director and I went to go accept the check from RIB, there were a lot of communities that had similar waterfront projects about what she's talking about for that Ty Oak area. So there's a lot of creative things you can do to really, like, jazz that up, um, make it more attractive. Any questions for the Assistant Town Manager before we vote one by one? Okay. No, we have to do roll call vote. We can't do voice, sorry. Um, item one, Ty Oak Lake, Friar Point, Stormwater Quality Improvement Green Infrastructure Project. Do I hear a motion to add the item to the list?
Make the vote.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to add Sandy Bottom Pump Station Evaluation and Improvements to the priority list? Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua? Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the addition of the Design of Wastewater Facility Plan, Planning Area Number Nine to the project priority list?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Shockley. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to add Woodland Manor Pump Station Evaluation Improvements to the project priority list?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Shockley, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to add Coventry High School On-Site Wastewater Treatment System to the project priority list? Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua?
The second.
Second by Councilwoman Shockley. Uh, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
And lastly, do I hear a motion to add Design of Stormwater Green Infrastructure Along Ty Oak Avenue, including the public boat ramp on Ty Oak Avenue?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Shockley, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Hit it, Joanne.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Item G?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, thanks. Item G, Sewer Tie-in Application, Eight Industrial Drive, Assessor Platt fifty-one Lot Five, Boston Scientific. Vice President LeBlanc and also Chair of the Sewer Subcommittee can confirm that we did hear this tie-in request, and it get, got a positive endorsement from the Sewer Subcommittee.
Yes, and Boston Scientific was present for the meeting.
Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc? Second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion for members of the council? Councilwoman Pasqua.
Does this, uh, give them any resolution to that water issue they complain about often? I, I know I've got quite a few emails from them in the past about flooding in the back there. I don't know. It's a sewer tie-in, uh, it's just someone ended up a drainage or anything.
Uh, there was no discussion.
Or related to the water.
Didn't bring that up at all.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the tie-in application? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Council Business Matters carried over. Item A, update on Coventry Nutrition LLC in regards to their Victorin license renewal. Um, Madam Clerk, I don't know if this person is attending this evening, or if you have any updates.
Um, they should be on Zoom. Um, but we did get, um, their letter of good standings. Um, they did email us over a copy of it.
Which, which office was it from?
Secretary of State's office.
So is it your, uh, positive recommendation to renew their license? And, and, or do they have everything that they, have they submitted everything?
They have submitted everything.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Coventry, uh, Nutrition LLC's license.
I second it.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilwoman Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
An emphatic yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Ditto.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Uh, members of the council, I'll now seek a motion to go into executive session.
Make the mo-, uh.
Oh, yes, you're right. Um, at this time, what? What?
I'm not good at these rolls. We have one more item to vote on after executive session, right?
Oh, true, yeah, let's save it. That's a good idea. Well, you know what? There's no limit. What, um, what's the pleasure of the council? Would you like to take a public comment now? We can add one later.
I, I say we do a public comment now and a public, uh, comment after.
All right. Um, at this time, we'll take public comment for undocketed items. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make a public comment on undocketed items? Just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Make sure the microphone is on.
Believe that's on. Uh, Michael Grattan, ninety-four Wisteria Drive. Um, just briefly, I appreciate the council's time and all your energy and efforts. I'll keep this very brief. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Shockley and Council President Lima, who, uh, who responded to a request, uh, to discuss an item that I had. The big item was, uh, as a member, uh, and a resident of, uh, Wood Estates, Wisteria Drive and Woodcove, a number of us got notifications from DPW that because we're pumping water onto the street that we're in violation of a, of a town ordinance, that we're going to be fined seventy-five dollars. Um, I sit had, in, in discussions, I understand where that's coming from and all of that. The one comment I wanted to make regarding that was that the letter was very, uh, it, it doesn't do, it doesn't service the town well. Certainly, it's a, it's, it's a letter that was a form letter that, uh, was trying to make a point, but it really is very confrontational. Um, and quite honestly, I, I feel it's one of the reasons why people in this town, um, get very jaded when it comes to dealings with the town. The effective was, you know, my, my basement, I've spoken to the council before, I've spoken to the planning commission. If, you know, anybody who knows me know my basement is flooded for the twenty-eight years that I've lived in that house. It flooded the day they put the, 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 the foundation in, and yet the town approved it to be built anyways. This was not known to me as a twenty-something-year-old with two kids under two trying to buy a house in a nice community. I've lived with it, I've dealt with it, but I still have to pump water out to the street every spring when it floods. I like to, uh, associate that letter and the tone of that letter the same as, well, your house is flooding, but if you don't stop pumping water to the street, you're going to get fined. If my house were on fire, and it was during a drought, would I get a similar letter saying that I'm, you know, having open burn during a drought season when there's no open burning? Or would I be getting the same letter about outdoor water use during a drought, trying to put out the fire in my house? My house has effectively been on fire for twenty-eight years. I'm not saying that I, I understand where the ordinance is coming from, but the tone was very off-putting to, to myself and a number of neighbors who are just trying to keep their houses from being flooded. So in having conversations that I've had, I appreciate the support of the members of council I spoke with, and I just wanted to kind of leave it at that. But I do want this to be as a forewarning. We've heard about the flooding in the recent development in, in District Four. And the Coventry Crossings develop, proposed development that's gone now gone to the state. Even, uh, Mr. Flynn had said, the state water abatement and water containment does not work for any big storms. If we're already having flooding problems on the streets that we're living in now, anything that's done to that field, which by the way, the original proposals that they had for the road going around the edge of it is under a foot of water right now. So anything that, anything that happens to that field, if those aren't, if those, uh, issues aren't looked at, we're going to have even more significant flooding, not just for the people that live in these neighborhoods now that have been paying taxes for decades, but for all the new residents. And they're, and they're going to be suffering. So I just hope that somehow we can somehow communicate to the state, to the DEM, that we can represent that even though you're approving these plans, you've approved plenty of plans that don't work. And so, uh, I appreciate your time. I'm so sorry to have, it's a late night, I know. And I just want to, I want to thank you for your time, for both of your attentions to the matter. And, um, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in council chambers, public comment on undocketed items? Any members of the public on Zoom, public comment on undocketed items? Those items not on the agenda this evening. Going once? Going twice? Three times, public comment on undocketed items is closed. And now we'll move to executive or closed session items. Uh, members of the council, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Make motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Shockley? Second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion?
Councilman.
Oh, hold on. Uh, members of the public, the council will be going into executive session to discuss the following. Pursuit to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A one. Re-follow-up discussion on police recruit to St. Injury. Pursuit to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, relitigation exposure covering land use development and bonding. Executive or closed session pursuant to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two for litigation matters, Resocial Holdings LLC and Town of Coventry. Pursuit to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two for litigation matters, Reed Nicholas E. Cambio, trustee at all, B. Commerce Park Realty LLC. And Matthew J. McGowan as receiver for Commerce Park Realty LLC at all, B. Commerce Park Management LLC. And pursuant to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A one for job performance, Reed Town Manager, one-year evaluation. If there, is there any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc? Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
All right. We good? Yep. Uh, could I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Shockley, second by Vice President LeBlanc. Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Hey you.
Yes. Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Could I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilor Shockley, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Seal them up.
What? Councilmember Capaldi. Yes. Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss items A through E listed on our docket. A discussion was had, no votes were taken. Moving on to the final item on our agenda under resolutions of the council. Item B, Resolution 2024-6, vote to release the guarantee known as Green Farm Bond in the full amount of $168,248 for the approved development known as Green Farm Estate. Um, Andrew Prillo?
Yes, I'd like to ask the council if they would continue that matter and allow GPW Director McGee uh, to conduct his portion of the inspection. Uh, there was a process failure on our end where he was not part of that original uh, inspection. So before the council releases that bond, I would ask that he's allowed to uh, given the chance to re-inspect it. And then if he finds that everything is fine, go through the normal process of sending it to the planning commission for approval and then back to this council.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? What's the pleasure of the council? Do I hear a motion to continue the item, uh, contention based upon the town manager recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc.
Second.
Second by Councilor Shockley, any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Uh, is there a motion to add an additional public comment on undocketed items?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc.
Second.
Second by Councilman Pasqua, any discussion? Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
This time we'll entertain public comment again on undocketed items only. Are there any members of the public on Zoom who'd like to make a public comment on undocketed items? Going once, twice, three times, public comment on undocketed items is closed. This time I'll seek a motion to adjourn at 9:28 PM.
Make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc. Second by Councilman Pasqua, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we stand adjourned. What?